Good evening and welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Bella Vista City Council. Will you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do the roll call of council. Councilmember Wozniak?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Wilms?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We move on to citizen input. The first is Nina Berger, please.
I'm here because of my concern over our street, Eight Sidlaw Hills Drive, and how fast the workers are driving up and down our street. Luckily, we're too old to have children. But we do have pets.
What street is that?
Eight Sidlaw Hills Drive in Bella Vista.
So Chief? Sidlaw Hills, speeding on Sidlaw Hills is the query? Okay, good.
Oh, I've called the police, but I didn't get a response.
Okay, Chief is sitting right back there.
Okay, that was my main concern.
No, that's well taken, I'm glad you brought it up. And if I may, I'll share your address and your telephone number with Chief as well?
Okay.
Great stuff.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lynn?
Hi, my name is Lynn Goldbeck, I live at 13 Sidlaw Hills Drive, across the street from Nina Berger. Really, they're two years, Don Robinson, who was on this planning commissioner, for 14 years, he has this plaque. He would be here tonight, but he's had medical issues. He would love to express his, how we're dealing with this. So I'm here on behalf of both of us. Started with fires. Started with clearing, we know that there's been a lot of ordinances, changes, but we've had unattended fires, not controlled. Stolen water out of hydrants, from a private fire engine, from Dwayne Swanson, builder from Gentry. That's been verified. There have been calls on this, and they haven't come. Well, they've had fires right next to homes at 40 feet, with embers going next to homes. We've got five brand new homes being built, just on Sidlaw Hills and Sidlaw Hills Lane. And so, that all started there, the clearing and the fires. They didn't come on the 31st, or the 30th of November, even though there was a call, and they didn't show up. And we have somebody who will talk about that. And they left a fire engine, a private fire engine, outside of the lot by the 17 home on Sidlaw Hills Lane, or Drive, and they left a fire engine sitting there, unattended.
And that was back in November?
November 30th, just last year. So then we continued to call next three nights in a row, and the fire department did come, but they'd always say it was controlled burns. And it was really pulling teeth to get people to come and put the fires out. And they even tried to call the builder, and he didn't answer. In fact, I want, I don't know if you received the petition that I took to Dwayne Jurtson, that was signed by all our neighbors?
I don't remember seeing it, no.
About this very thing, you never saw it, you were on vacation, I brought it down to the city hall.
Yeah, that was quite a while back.
And you did get it to the mayor? Well, Lois Adams, who lives on 22 Sidlaw Hills Drive, this two house is being built on two lots there. Dwayne Swanson, right here, wanted, give his phone number, he asked me to watch fire and call if needed attention. Filled tank with fire truck from the hydrant at 18 Sidlaw Hills Drive. Drove track hoe down the street, we've even had water meters pulled up out of, and the whole pipe broke. And it was like that for a long time, till the P.O.A. come fixed it. And it's not fixed yet, because they just put the cap back on, so there was a hole where the water cap was off. Blocked mailboxes for two days, that's her writing right here, she can't make it tonight either, so I'm reading this, what she wrote on this petition. We've tried everything we can, they had to put the fires out, each time, it was three fires. Waste a lot of water, a lot of time, a lot of city materials.
And when was that, Lynn?
That was on the 1st and 2nd and 3rd of December, you know, three nights in a row.
So we're back to December?
Mm-hmm. So then we thought, okay, so...
Your time is up, Lynn, I'm sorry.
Can I get an extension on the litter?
No, three minutes.
Okay, well, somebody else will talk about that, I've got pictures I've sent to Jerry Snow, by the way.
Okay.
He has them, thank you.
Great, thank you. Chris Nelson?
Chris Nelson, 1 Harrington Drive, I've sent multiple emails, apparently they're going to junk. Going to echo the same sentiment. We've called about illegal dumping on our street in January, wife called back in March, three other residents called, one resident actually met with you in your office, seems to be a lack of follow-through issue going on. Just need people to start taking their jobs seriously and start having some accountability.
Name of the resident, please?
Mary Green.
Oh yes, okay. She actually called me.
She called you, and she met with you, and there was still no follow-through. Believe it was May 9th, reported illegal dumping again, vegetative material, sent an email again, called the non-emergency police line, no response, no follow-through, sent an email to you and the chief of police, no follow-up after it was found and junked. The only person that followed up was Doug Tap, so I appreciate that. That's, I'm here to support Jerry Snow, and you wanted to see people out here, so that's why I'm here.
I believe I followed up when you called me, did I, immediately, right?
You did.
Okay. You got taken care of, right?
When he came back into town, the lack of follow-up stopped.
That's because everything went to junk mail, remember we talked about that?
Yeah.
So might want to follow up on your email system and make sure that residents' emails are coming through. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is it Mark Wasson?
My name is Mark Wasson, 5 Buckingham Drive. I just had a few questions. First one, the lot clearing burn permit application, I'm looking at here. I tried to reach out to Jason Bowman today, several occasions, excuse me. The number on here doesn't go to him, he goes to the city, I was rerouted to several fire stations, I still don't know where he's at, to get, I have a lot of questions here on this permit application. How does this process work? You fill out the information, it says it emails to Jason Bowman, he clears the permit? Is that my, is that how this works?
Yes, he's the fire marshal.
Okay, so he gives the permit, right? If I'm a builder, I go over, I put it on the tree, I go to put it on the tree, right? I have someone clear it? Who's following up to make sure that the people are getting these permits, don't have criminal backgrounds, or any other information like that? I mean, who, if you're building 4,000 houses, pretty good chance that you're going to have 4,000 clearing permits, wouldn't you agree?
Mm-hmm, sure.
So who oversees that, at that point?
Mr. Tap.
Okay. So he's responsible for these, because on several occasions, I've been out to these lots, there's no signage, saying the lots are being cleared. In a lot of cases, they're burning and nobody's around.
Doug, don't they have to post the permit? It's the erosion permit, and grading, E and G?
So there should be some information that's provided when I enter the lot, if it's burned, right? Because I haven't seen it. And it says here, on the sheet, it says contractor. A lot of these guys have people clearing the lots that aren't contractors, are they supposed to be on this to? You're, you have to address the council, please. Are the people on here supposed to be, the contractor here, it says, for permit application? If he's not a contractor, can he still get a burn permit, I guess is my question?
Well, if he's working for a contractor, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. In a lot of cases, they get someone to clear it, right?
That's correct. Yep.
Whose responsibility is this, rolls back up to...
It rolls back to the contractor, not the cell.
Okay. All right. So after it gets approved, it should be in that lot, then it's overseen by Doug Tap, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. My other question was on the city site, on sewer hookups. I've asked repeatedly to get updates on that.
The city doesn't have any sewer.
There's a sewer list, I understand it works on the water department, but there's a list that's, goes back to May, that shows which streets are on sewer.
That's maintained by village wastewater.
Okay, so you don't have any responsibility, so when you go to dig up the roads, or any of that stuff, it goes under village wastewater?
Correct, Frank Knight is the contact.
Okay, because I talked to you, Doug, about that. Doug, you remember you had to come see? I talked to Doug Tap about that, and he would say, he said he'd check into it, he didn't tell me I need to redirect it to somebody else.
Yeah, Frank Knight is your fellow.
Okay.
K-N-I-G-H-T.
So who oversees doing that? I'd have to talk to...
Yep, the time's up.
Okay.
But we can chat afterwards, or you can chat with Doug afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Gray?
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Gray, I'm at 12 Presley Lane, and I am currently building a house that is close to being done, and I had my driveway poured, and so I contacted the streets department to find about, find out about getting the rest of my cul-de-sac paved, because my lane is paved right up to my property line, and just the cul-de-sac section is not. And the nice gentleman at the streets department said that it was his understanding, they were no longer paving any unpaved streets, they were only maintaining those that were paved, and that I needed to talk to the city council about getting that component of my street paved, because I'm building, and then there's several other homes that are going to be started on that. So that is my question, is how do I proceed with getting the street paved in front of my house, like my neighbors have?
Okay. At the response portion, council member Flynn is actually head up of the streets department, and I'm sure he'll be glad to tell you.
All right, thank you so much for...
You're welcome. Randy Murray?
I'm Randy Murray, my address is 2551 Forest Hills Boulevard, I just wanted to comment on the variance code changes that were proposed and talked about in the last meeting, I think it's fantastic. That process, it just, it takes a long time. Most people don't own their buildings, and they lease their buildings, and the leasing process takes a long time, it's expensive, and to tie up all that money, to try to get the variance, to tie up all that money, waiting on the permit process, and then, once you're permitted and everything's approved, then you get to go hunt down, in this market, a team of contractors to get started, and the 120-day window is just an impossible task. And so, it just makes people have to come back and get another variance, and it just, it takes too long. I think we're going to end up bankrupting small businesses trying to wait for it, and so, there's a bunch of proposed changes on there, and I think they're fantastic, and I think that's the kind of stuff that we need to be seeing more of, and with the planning commission and city council, and I'm thrilled to see it on there. And so, anyway, I wanted to tell you guys what I thought about that, and I've been on the other side of that coin, you know, waiting on that stuff, and it's just, it's a super expensive process to just sit and wait, and sit and wait, and sit and wait, before you even have the opportunity to go hire people to do the work, and so, the 120-day window is not even a possibility, I don't think, in this market. And so, anyway, just for your consideration, when it's time to talk about that, thanks.
Thank you. Mark Bean?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mark Bean, I live at 4 Sidlaw Hills Lane in Bella Vista, neighbors with Nina Berger and Lynn Goldbeck. I want to appreciate everybody for listening to our concerns tonight, I know it's, kind of, can be troublesome, but I can attest to all the points that they have made, namely the speeding has been a pretty big issue. My 81-year-old mother lives four doors up from me, on Sidlaw Hills Drive, and I can attest that there's a whole lot of cars that drive way past the 25 mile an hour speed limit on that street, so. Other than that, the fires that we've had, that were unattended, there were many, as Lynn attested to, the one that stands out the most was on that November 30th. I was driving up to take care of my mom, she needed some attention, and here I see this bonfire with these sparks that are shooting 40, good 40 feet in the air, and there's a breeze blowing, which is blowing a lot of the sparks right across the roadways. So there I stopped, and I'll tell you, a good way to meet a new neighbor is to stop at a fire and then back into their brick mailbox, I can attest to that. But I just want to make sure that we're aware, I did call the fire department that night, the young man that I did talk to, so that he would get somebody out there, we didn't see anybody. There wasn't any, there was no follow-through on that whatsoever. So, just want to make you aware of that.
Okay, thank you, Mark, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That ends the citizen input. We'll move now to council reply. John, do you want to kick it off with the paving policy?
Sure. Yeah, I believe Elizabeth Gray was the lady's name, yeah, I'd like to discuss with you afterwards, you know, get the details on it, and, but, the paving policy was made more strict in the last year or so, at council's behest, actually, that they didn't necessarily want to pave every time there was some new construction, but that doesn't mean it couldn't possibly occur, I would like to talk to you about it. And my contact info is on the website, and I wouldn't mind getting your contact info if you could, if you could leave it for me. Let's see, on the other issues that came up, on Sidlaw Hills, I was wondering if the fires are all past tense, or if that still could be an issue, and on Randy Murray's comment, I was wondering what he thought about 365 days?
Okay.
Instead of 120.
We're not going to get into a debate, so Randy, is it thumb up or thumb down on 365?
I think, I think two years is probably better.
Okay. Lynn, are the fires still going? I'm sorry? Okay. Okay, but are the fires still occurring? Okay. Okay. Okay, thanks Lynn. All right, anybody else wish to comment?
Yeah, I will. Just, everybody needs to remember as well, that their home hasn't existed where it does, from the beginning, forever. At some point, at some time, that lot was cleared, and that home was built, and it was probably just as messy, and it could have been more messy than the house that might be being built next door across the street. It's just messy, period. It's inconvenient, I get it, again, I wish it were perfect, it isn't. I will tell you, every time someone has called me to ask for assistance, or any help I might be able to give them, and get in a certain situation taking place, taken care of, I have done that. Every single time, CDS and Fire has followed up, like immediately, and taken care of the issue, taken care of the problem, contacted the contractor or whatever. And you got to remember too, as hard as it is, there are contractors, but there are so many subcontractors coming and going all the time, it's just hard to manage the whole thing. So, just, you know, I ask you to keep that in mind too. If you have any issues, call one of the city council members, because they might have a little bit more direct line or contact with an individual that they might need to talk to in order to try to get something taken care of. And Chris, you alluded, right, that you didn't get any response, but you didn't talk about, when you called me, I came straight out with Doug Tap, we looked it all over, we tried to follow up, we tried to figure out what was going on. With illegal dumping, what I found fascinating is, that had to be kind of a big deal, when whoever brought that deck in there and dumped it, and what's fascinating is, no one ever said they saw anything, or they heard anything, so they could give us a heads-up for who it might be. We still don't know who dumped the deck, it could have been whoever owned those two lots. But I got an email from Doug today, or yesterday, saying that the guy that owns those two lots, he had grading permits, he could clear the lot, he has building permits and everything else, so he is allowed some leeway on those lots. Not saying he can dump on it necessarily, certain materials, but all I want is to let you know is, that as soon as I was made aware of it, we followed up and we tried to get the situation taken care of, and you know it. Well, that might be, but I wasn't involved any time before that, any time before then. So I do know that you did get a response, and the situation did get taken care of. Now, this isn't a go back and forth, this is my time to respond with you.
Okay Lynn, yep, Jerry can show us later. Yep. Doug, anything else?
No, that's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you to all of the public input speakers tonight, you know, I think if there is a thread that ran through a number of those feedbacks, it was responsiveness. And I think, I think, when, I think the city is really in the business of providing service to our citizens and to our residents, and so I think that feedback is useful, and I think it helps us understand where we're at, and whether we're meeting the needs, and I'm sure no service business bats a thousand, but we should aspire to be complete and thorough in the feedback, and in the response that we give to citizens when they're inquiring. So that's real, and I think our department heads get to hear it here in a public forum, I think that's useful, and not to be defensive about it, but to always be looking at, this is our business, this is what we do, how can we do it a little bit better? How can we do it better next time? And I could give instances of where I've called the fire department, and they've responded immediately to an unattended fire on our street. That's not really the point, the point isn't where we did right, the point is, how consistently are we meeting the expectations of our residents? And that's a high bar, but it is one we ought to aspire to.
Okay, on the other side, anyone?
No.
Just a couple of comments, I guess my experience in working with the DCD and the fire department, police department, they've all been responsive, and not necessarily directly to me, but in terms of issues that have come up, we did adopt revisions last year that created a permitting process for lot burns, because of the problems that we're encountering and experiencing, that became a big issue. The result of that was that the fire department streamlined it, so you can do an online application, it's reviewed and processed online, and then there's some requirements of the applicant to notify the fire department when they're going to do the burn, and if it's not a good time, they're told at that point, that they can't burn on that day or that week, whatever the case may be, it might be a drought, dry period, so they can't burn for the week. Might be a wind condition, so they need to call and notify the fire department, they can call, actually, five minutes before they start the fire, but they do need to call and notify them. So they can be, they can be fined for that, if anyone sees them doing something that doesn't make sense, call the non-emergency number at the fire department, ask about the permit. If it looks like it's too windy and they're still burning out there, there's things blowing, ashes blowing over. So, there are reasons for doing that. Some of the builders are jobbers, which means that they do nothing themselves, they have no workforce, they subcontract every activity that goes on in building a house, and we have a number of those, it's a business, and so the builder will sign the documents, but he may not have or lift a finger on doing any of the work, it's all sub-doubt. So, those are all challenges that we face in terms of administration.
Thank you, Mr. Snow, anything?
Yeah, just briefly, we're in the business of public service, and these people are our customers, so, and if it was a retail establishment or something, and they called on them and did not get the service that they were supposed to get, they'd go someplace else, but in our situation, they don't have that opportunity. It's, we are supposed to deal with those matters, and, but, it seems like maybe that we've gotten into a situation of, it sounds to me like some excuses, we've got a lot of excuses as to why we're not doing certain things. We got too much to do, we got an overload, we got more work to take care of than we got the people to take care of it. I don't know what the answer is to, to, to improve on that service. I know what the answer is, but I don't know that, I don't think I have the ability to make that happen. So, again, thanks to everyone for your comments, and for what you've had to say tonight, and hope that if you have a problem, you got an issue, that you continue to reach out to the proper department, if you don't get an answer there, well then, you call one of us. I know, I try myself to be responsive to the people that call, and I, because I believe in, I believe in customer service, I believe in being of service to the people that pay our, that support us. That's it.
Okay, Chief?
Well, you know, these people aren't looking for excuses, they're looking for results. If it's the fact that we don't have enough people to take care of what they want, well, then we need to go and put some more people on. If they are in fact reporting as they say they are, and I have no reason to believe that they're not, you know, if you're talking to a dispatcher or a fireman, you know, if they can give us date and time and stuff, almost everything gets recorded, find out who's not passing the information on, and find out what's going there.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I, my follow-up? Yeah, so, I agree with Steve's comments, you know, we're in business of customer service, right? We want to satisfy the residents of the city, we would aspire to bat a thousand percent. Fact is, that's a pretty, that's a pretty tall task, right? And I will tell you that when CDS, when something slips by, and they're not aware of it, and they got to go out and take care of it, they're disappointed, you know? I interact with them all the time, and I'm, and the thing about me is, I'm not making excuses for them, but I'm not going to throw them under the bus either, because I know how hard they work, and I know how hard they strive to service the residents of this community. I wish it was a perfect world, but it isn't, and I hear your concerns. I mean, I, today, got my truck, I drove around for two hours, just finding new builds, just looking at them, just seeing what's going on, and, you know, most of them were pretty good, I don't know what perfect is, but they were pretty good. A couple of them, I took photos of them, I'm going to contact Doug's staff tomorrow, see if we can't have some follow-up, and see if we can't get something about, done about it. So I do appreciate your comments, but everybody works really hard to service the residents of Bella Vista, trust me, I know it for a fact.
Okay, thank you, thank you one and all for your comments tonight, that was good.
And Mayor, just one thing, Randy, you gave us a four-digit address for where you live on Forest Hills?
Yeah.
There aren't many houses on Forest Hills, just exactly, more or less, where is that?
Yeah, so where the new police station is?
Yeah. Oh, that house, the last, you're the last house in the city, aren't you, Randy? All right, thank you.
All righty, thank you one and all. I'm sorry ma'am, the sign-up was earlier to be able to talk, the counselors, the counselors are, I'm sorry? Yep, the list was over by the front, where everybody was signing up. Now if, if you want, you can speak to us afterwards? Sure, because I don't think we're going to be that long. I'm sorry?
I'd like to make a motion, we let him talk, he gets three minutes?
I would second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Dwayne?
Okay, you want to do a roll call on that?
Yep.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie? Okay, sir, you were first. Do you want to come up and, sure. Could you give us your name, address, and phone number?
Yes, my name's Gray Hasting, and I'm a resident at 34 Constance Circle here in Bella Vista. I'm speaking to you all today, because I'd like to try to add an ordinance, or see what I'd have to do to add an ordinance that prohibits the chaining, tethering, or trawling of dogs in unfenced areas. I'd like to adopt an ordinance similar to the language of Mamaw Arkansas, which states, animals may not be tethered, any person owning animals, whether vaccinated or unvaccinated, licensed or unlicensed, shall confine such animal within an adequate fence or enclosure, or within a house, garage, or other building. Animals shall not be tied or chained to dog houses or other stationary objects, but must be in an improved enclosure. I want to do this for a few different reasons. The first reason is that it's unsightly, and does not fit the aesthetic appearance that I think Bella Vista tries to promote, for the same reason that people aren't allowed to store their RVs, their boats in the driveways, or have cars sitting on cinder blocks. or have cars sitting on cinder blocks, I think that residents should not be allowed to have dogs untethered in unfenced areas because it's unsightly. And a big part of the reason it's unsightly is because of the inhumane nature of the activity. Uh, but the second, more important reason is that it poses a safety hazard to the residents of Bella Vista, particularly young children. Twenty-five percent of all fatal dog attacks from 1965 to 2001 were inflicted by chained dogs. And thirty percent of children aged one to nine killed by dogs in the U.S. between 1989 and 1994 died after wandering too close to a chained animal, uh, chained dog. Furthermore, a study by the CDC found that chained dogs are 2.8 times more likely to bite and tend to exhibit more aggressive behavior than dogs that are not tethered. Aggressive dogs are more likely to bark as well, which also creates a nuisance for the surrounding houses. Bella Vista is a community that encourages outdoor recreation and people should not have to worry about a tethered dog attacking them or their children while they walk, play, or ride their bike outside. In my personal situation, our neighbor is a woman in her late eighties that has a ninety-pound boxer that is aggressive, energetic, energetic and unsupervised in her front yard for hours a day. She is not physically capable of handling a dog that size, and I am worried that one day, if the dog will break free of its tether, every time it is outside and I leave my house, it runs to the end of its tether and aggressively barks at me and my wife and everybody else who passes by. This has been going on for months, and I do not think that any resident of Bella Vista should have to deal with this every time they bring in groceries, do yard work, get their mail, or walk by their neighbor's house. Additionally, I will be having small children play out there in the future, and I do not want to worry about them being attacked by a large, aggressive, unsupervised tethered dog. Adding an ordinance like the one that I suggested would be beneficial for all residents, both human and canine of Bella Vista, and I'd like to see our great CDB like the many others that have adopted ordinances of this nature.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Hastings. Uh, ma'am?
Okay, you got something other than different than what we've heard tonight?
I, I just was wondering if y'all had talked about the Airbnbs?
Not yet, we're working on.
No, no, that hasn't come in front of council yet.
Oh.
Okay, that.
We were told that it, it was tonight.
No, no, the earliest will be next month.
Okay.
Our agendas are online.
That was all I needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Anybody wanna talk anymore?
No.
I guess, my understanding was that you're not allowed to tether a dog from a single point, that you're required to have a stringer between two posts, two trees, with a sliding loop that can run on that tether line to allow the dog movement so that it can't get wrapped up or tied up or choked up, so that it has free roam to go.
If I looked into the ordinance on this hour, there's actually nothing about it. There's void ordinance that are on paper here, or there's nothing really about the nature of that, but tether, I don't think really.
Okay, the person you wanna talk to, if you turn over on your left shoulder, that's our animal control officer right there, Leslie Ann Pratt. And I know that, um, she's well aware of this and we shared your email, which is basically what you read tonight, uh, with her. So if you wanna have a chat with her, by all means do so. If you don't wanna hear the rest of the stuff, you can go out into the corridor and have a chat, and I know she'd be more than happy, uh, to do so. Okay? All right. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of the April 25th regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions?
Move that be approved.
Second.
Okay, that's moved by Mr. Snow and seconded by Mr. Fowler. Yeah. Any discussion?
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. Financial reports. Kim has sent out February, March, April. We're now finally caught up. Um, I won't do the February and March, but in the April one, um, I'm pleased to report that the city sales tax is twenty-seven percent increase over the budget. And the county is actually five percent over the budget, and if you remember, we had some concerns about the county. And so these good numbers actually mean that we're $406,688 over the budget, uh, as far as a revenue surplus. And that'll come into our discussion later for Chief Graves' request, which if you remember, we denied at the budget time for more people because we wanted to see what the impact was gonna be on the sales tax. So we're in excellent financial shape. There is a copy, I guess they're all gone, um, but you can get them from City Hall and they've also been posted on the webpage if you'd like to see our latest financial statements. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilms and Mr.?
Flynn.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. On to new business, we have an ordinance, amending section 109-42, Variances to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to Remove Time Limits of Zoning Variances to Reduce the Required Review Criteria for Zoning Variances to Remove Parking Reduction Considerations from Administrative Review and for Other Purposes. Staff is requesting third and final reading. Mr. Wilms, I understand that you have an amendment?
I do. I'd like to make a few comments about the proposed, uh, request for variance. The proposal is to reduce the criteria, uh, for considering a variance, uh, by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Uh, variance is really a request to, to get a permanent approval to break the law in the city of Bella Vista. It's the same in other cities where variances are dealt with. But literally, they're asking to break the law for a particular reason. Those reasons, uh, are held high in terms of standards. The reasons that we have now started out as a basic group of, of five, and that basic group of five deals with five concepts. One is preservation of intent. Another one is exceptional circumstance. Another one is hardships which are not grounds for a variance. In other words, a self-imposed hardship is not a reason for a variance, and unimposed hardship can be a reason. Preservation of property rights of that zoning district. And then absence of detriment, meaning absence of detriment to adjacent or surrounding properties. So those are the traditional five. Those were, uh, modulated into eight, eight factors. They become cumbersome. So the planning, uh, staff proposed an amendment to follow the state criteria, uh, for variances, and their, their criteria are broad, but cover those areas, but in three steps rather than in five steps or eight steps. So they believe that administratively, it will be more cost-effective for them to do it that way. And I think, uh, we need to try that and see how it works. My request tonight for the proposed amendment, or proposed ordinance adopting those changes is twofold. One is that I agree with eliminating the, no, parking standards. So we have no parking standards for commercial. It's up to each business to make sure they have enough parking on their facility to accommodate their needs and business order. Secondly, is that a proposal in this request is to eliminate any time, uh, or a sunset provision on the variance granted. Uh, I think, like a building permit, it has a time of performance on it, commensurate with the time to reasonably start a project. A variance should have that same standard. There are unscrupulous folks out there, and I've been in this business for close to fifty years now, uh, dealing with the public with variances, with zoning issues and codes. And there are people out there who will take advantage of getting a variance approval and then using it to improve their position on their property that they want to sell or market or, or construct. And it's not for their, not for the benefit necessarily of the, uh, situation, but it's for personal gain. And so I would propose that we have an amendment that would replace the time limit there. I think it's a hundred and twenty days to extend that time limit as a sunset of three-hundred-and-sixty-five days. Attorney Kelly passed out a, a draft of that, uh, language for you tonight. So I would submit that as a proposed, uh, uh, motion to amend, to bring time, a time of performance back into it.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion to amend from Mr. Wilms, a second from Mr. Burke. And that's the one that, um, Mr. Kelly held up early?
Yes.
Um, I think there are some copies back there as well? And they're on the table, okay. Discussion, gentlemen?
I would just say, Mayor, that I, I think it's practical to have some kind of end date on it, and I think a year is adequate, uh, to give people the opportunity to start, uh, the establishment of their variance. They don't have to finish it by then, they have to start it by then. Seems, seems practical and, and fair to me.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I kind of agree with Mr. Wilms' concept that having it totally open ended maybe wasn't a good idea, and there should be some kind of limit. So I, I see where he's going with that.
Okay, Doug, anything?
A year's sufficient.
Okay. Anybody on this side? Okay, we have an amendment on the floor. It's been moved and seconded, and we'll go for a roll call.
Okay, roll call vote on the amendment. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Did you wanna say something, Mr. Kelly? I'm sorry. Okay.
I was anticipating, but you brought it in.
To suspend the rules and move to third and final for the amended ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Do you think that was Mr. Flynn and, and Mr. Wilms? Oh, Wozniak and Wilms, sorry, John.
It's all right.
Okay, is there any further discussion before, I'm sorry, I'm gonna read it. Okay. Yep, yeah, so I'm gonna read it now.
Okay, we'll do the roll call.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Okay, amending section 109-42, Variances to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to Remove Time Limits of Zoning Variances to Reduce the Required Review Criteria for Zoning Variances to Remove Parking Reduction Considerations from Administrative Review and for Other Purposes as amended. Third and final reading.
Point of order, if I may. Do we need to change the title? Okay.
Anyone else?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Wilms?
All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Again, yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance is amending section 107, 317, Access Management of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to Provide Clarification Regarding Access Drive Distance from Intersections and for Other Purposes. In your packet this time, there are some, uh, diagrams that I think Derek you, um, put together. And it provides a little more clarification on what we were talking about at the work session. Count Icino prompted here to go to third and final. So, um, is there any discussion at this time, or just move on? And we'll do a second reading next month.
I think the consensus, uh, in talking with, uh, Derek is to, uh, do the first reading and we'll consider any additions for next month.
All right, fair enough. That's okay, Derek? Okay? Okay, then we'll move on to the first resolution of the evening. And that's renaming Mole Lane to Mack Lane. If you remember, we had a petition, um, for this change to honor a gentleman who is now deceased, who had lived on that lane. There were very, very few houses, uh, and we had asked the petitioners if they had written approval from the other residents to actually do this, 'cause they'll have to change their address, roll their credit cards, et cetera, et cetera. And they did not. So we asked them to actually give us something in writing that says that they have no objection. As of, um, today, Taylor, we haven't heard anything. So I'm going to entertain a motion to table until June, 'cause I believe they're out of state, are they not? In California? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we table till, uh, what month are we in, June meeting?
On June?
Second.
Second, Mr. Flynn, any discussion? Wayne?
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, Expressing the Willingness of the City of Bella Vista to Utilize Federal Aid Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, Attributable Funds to Assist with the Construction of the Mercy Way Corridor Improvements. This and the next one are both Mercy Way Bridge. And so what has happened is we have ended up incurring additional cost from Carroll Electric to move some of the lines. One of the property owners decided at the last minute that he was not going to give Carroll Electric an easement, and therefore the actual positioning of the lines had to change, which is going to cost the city $196,000. So we are asking council's permission to pursue grants to be able to make up eighty percent of that. And there's two separate grants. This is the first one, it's an SDB, uh, grant program, and it's an eighty-twenty. So that's what we're trying to do here, 'cause we wanna keep the city exposure on that, um, seven million dollar project very, very low. We've got it down to about three hundred and something thousand now, Doug? Okay, fair enough. Are there any questions for Doug and his crew on this? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I think we got Mr. Flynn and Chief Wozniak?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is expressing the willingness of the City of Bella Vista to Utilize Federal Aid Transportation Alternatives Program funds to assist with the construction of the Mercy Way Corridor Improvement. So this is the other grant that we will go after to try and help us, uh, reduce this extra cost. The plan is to take the, the one hundred and ninety-six and divide it in half and apply to regional planning for, uh, these two grants. Are there any questions at all?
I'd like to acknowledge and thank Emily for her initial effort to bring this to our attention and, and do the legwork to get this ready to go.
Agreed.
It's a tribute to, I think, the CDS Department for that.
That's good, thank you. And, okay, so I'm looking for a motion?
So moved.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fowler, second?
Second.
Mr. Wills?
All right. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a three-year lease contract with Stronghold Data LLC in an amount not to exceed $39,845.70 for the lease of Dell computers and associated equipment. For those of you that are not familiar with this, the city does not buy computers because they go out of date very quickly, and you don't have the support anymore within the twinkling of an eye, which is usually five years. So we lease them, and then we give them back, and we lease new ones back into the fold again. So we have a number of them. We actually had two programs that have come together, and that's why it's a little higher than we normally do. And so this amount of $39,000 and change is actually spread over three years, so that it's $13,282 a year, and the money is in the 2022 budget for this year. Any questions? Move?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by chief, seconded by Mr. Flynn.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Okay, thank you. The next resolution is amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $309,688 in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to the police department to fund three additional police officers, full-time police officers, including equipment and vehicles and one full-time police records clerk. Back to the previous budget discussion, year-to-date, we are in a very nice situation on our tax income of being $406,688 over the budget, plus we also have cash on hand of almost $17 million. So by our own ordinance, we have to keep 25% of that $17 million on hand for a rainy day. We're actually, when you take the unassigned and look at it and do the math, we're actually at 71%, so we're well ahead of the game. So chief had asked for these heads, as I mentioned earlier, back during the budget cycle last year, and we asked him to hold off until we had had a chance to review the tax revenue in the first quarter, and lo and behold, we are in good shape. Are there any questions for chief?
Move that be approved.
Mr. Snow to approve?
Second.
Mr. Flynn, second?
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $1,000 in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to Department Number 10 Administration to fund minor expenses related to the functions of the Bella Vista Arts Council. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir, Mayor Christie. This was proposed as a response to recognition of the Arts Council for the good work that they've done, for the Artist of the Month program especially. We understand that the Arts Council has to occasionally take money out of their own pocket for kind of incidental expenses, and this is just a way for the city to, to take that responsibility for those expenses so that we don't have volunteers having to take money out of their own pocket to, to volunteer on behalf of the city. So it's nominal amount, and for the year, we're going to allocate $1,000. This will be spent at the mayor's discretion by request of, of members of the Art Council.
Okay. Are there any questions at all?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Wills?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $15,000 in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to the Community Development Services Department to fund stipends for members of the Bella Vista Planning Commission, authorizing stipends in the amount of $150 per planning commission meeting for planning commissioners who are not the chair, and 180 per planning commission meeting for the planning commission chair. If you remember, this request had come in through CDS and the planning commission, especially since we have now melded the Board of Zoning Adjustment responsibilities into the planning commission. I did look at the city of, or the cities of Farmington, Lowell, and P Ridge. Farmington is paying $200 a meeting, Lowell 100, and P Ridge 175. So at the, at the work session, we felt that 150 was a happy medium for the commissioners, and then it was suggested that we also give an additional $30 to the chair. Is there any discussion at all? Mr. Wills?
Just one comment. Comment that the city of Centerville also pays their Board of Zoning Adjustment and their planning commission members for each meeting. The chair is separate, so if the designated chair is not there to chair the meeting, the one acting in the chair position gets the extra payment, because that's what their duty is for that night. So I don't know if our, our code allows for that, but I would think that there are occasions when our designated chairperson is not there. We do have a designated alternate, I think, for the planning commission, do we not?
There's only one chair at the planning commission at a time, so this doesn't take any of that into account.
Well, I-
It's not the person chairing the meeting, it's the chair. So even if the chair, of course, if the chair missed the meeting, the chair wouldn't be paid anyway.
Right. Okay.
But it only goes to the chairperson.
Okay, it's designated by ti- by, by title, not by activity at the meeting, so, okay, all right. I, I'm-
That's how it's written, so.
Yeah.
Moves that be approved.
May-
Second.
Before, well, before we move forward, I'd just like to say that, actually, before I became a city council member, I don't, I don't know that I fully understood the responsibility of a planning commission. If you read Arkansas State statutes, their authority is broad and wide, and there's a lot of responsibility. And we have a lot going on in Bella Vista right now, as we've already, you know, had some conversation about that earlier in the night. And if the planning commission member is fulfilling their full responsibility of the job, it takes a significant amount of time, trust me. I know what each one of us, what we have to do, the research, the homework, et cetera, and I would say that there certainly are months when the planning commission has no less responsibility that would take no less time. So I, I think this is a really good move, and I think they would, would fully earn, fully earn these amounts that we're, I think, probably going to approve tonight.
Okay. Thank you. I know I have a move.
Peter?
Yes, sir?
I, I'd just like to say I agree. I think this is long overdue, really, and the planning commission, ladies and gentlemen, I know it do a, a great service to the community.
Thank you.
Ray, for the vote?
Do we make a motion again?
Nope.
Nope, it's already done. Okay. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
The last resolution of the evening is approving the Bella Vista Advertising and Promotion Commission's appointment of Melissa Wells as a Tourism Industry Position Commissioner to fill an unexpired term ending the 31st of July 2024 resulting from the resignation of Ashley Dozier.
No, I'd just like to say, so I'm actually the chair of Discover Bella Vista, otherwise the Advertising Promotion Commission. We've had an open seat for a little while. I think the mayor will attest to this, and some others, we have, you know, different commissions or committees and what have you, and sometimes it's a struggle to fill some of these, these seats, you know, that are required to, to set on these commissions. So this one's been open for a little while. Melissa, that was brought to my attention by a gentleman, his company that manages the AMP. Melissa is actually, and her husband are the owners of a short-term rental here in Bella Vista. They reside over by Blowing Springs. Melissa is also a physical therapist that specializes in pool therapy, and I can attest that her schedule is really full. But we're really, we're really glad and happy to be able to bring her forward, and I hope she gets approval from the council this evening.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Wayne?
We haven't got a motion yet.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fowler, Mr. Flynn?
Okay. All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. Meetings and announcements, the next city council work session will be Monday, June 20th at 5:30 here in the courtroom. The next regular meeting of city council will be Monday, June 27th at 6:30, again here in the court. And the planning commission work session will be June the 2nd at 4:30 in the courtroom. The planning commission regular meeting will be June the 13th at 4:30, also in the courts. And the Board of Construction Appeals will be June the 14th, 2022, if required. On behalf of council, I wish all of you a very happy, safe, and Memorial Day weekend. Yes, Larry?
I just want to thank the planning staff for bringing forward the issues that they have been struggling with for a while and allowing us to update the code and making it more effective and useful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Safe journey home, and we are adjourned.